We're gonna go ahead and still tape it so the public can hear what we're talking about. We don't have to, but just in all fairness to the public, there's people that wait every week to hear issues instead of them coming down here to whatever. We're still gonna go ahead and conduct the meeting as regular, although it won't count as a forum meeting or whatever, it'll be more of a work session type stuff today in pure sense. Okay, uh, expenses reading the minutes, approve the bills, appropriations.
Okay, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. Um, the additional appropriations, there's two for the Board of Health. One is for fiscal year twenty-three integrated harm reduction grant. The other one is fiscal year twenty-four integrated harm reduction grant. Um, adult probation is a community-based corrections grant addendum. Neocap is Fund nine ninety-three. Um, it's receiving capital funding from the Department of Rehab and corrections to replace flooring. And then my office is estimating for additional Office three sixty-five licenses being requested by departments. Um, for all of what I've just said, those also pertain to item five with the estimated resources and so you'll find things that correspond. The other two, um, are common pleas, court, new furniture and fixtures being purchased using their special project fund, domestic relations juvenile court, increase in guarding at light and fees, and the Board of Elections request to cover maintenance on the bases for the new e-poll books and purchase new PC's. You want me to go into number four, transfer appropriations? I will do some and then leave some for Bob to do, he has quite a list. Um, so he has, actually, why don't we just start with him, 'cause they're listed. I didn't see how, they're different on my sheet, no, no, go ahead.
Okay, uh, spot modern, since they're engineers, um, I think I have two temporary listings. The first one is fifteen thousand dollars to purchase a new sewage pump for our Metro for District. The second one is our county tanker is down, so we're having these sanitary pumps flood, so I need ten thousand dollars in metrics for District, and eight thousand dollars in our Topeo Creek sewer business to remove floods, um, three thousand five more dollars till the end of the year for polymer and a flood process at Topeo Creek. We need an additional twenty-five thousand dollars for lease to use extra bidding for our Topeo Creek sewer district for repair work. We have a hundred and fifty additional dollars for setup packaging, um, another twenty-five thousand for our Champion Water District to use for activating, and nineteen thousand dollars for Topeo Water District. All that's the last.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna hold you to that. All right, so for Eastern District Court, oh, I'm sorry, I'm out of order here, sorry. Domestic Relations Juvenile Court, five hundred dollars is, oh, I wanna remind you that these are within funds, they're just line item to line item, all of these, including sanitary engineers. Um, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, so the five hundred dollars for Domestic Relations Juvenile Court is to pay to convey prisoners. Eastern Court is for a job shadow program. Uh, common pleas is to purchase audio equipment. Veteran Service Commission is to pay their share for the Office three sixty-five licenses. As we've talked about before, we're kind of doing these in a similar way to utilities, so whoever's utilizing them is paying for them. Uh, the licenses are actually really subscription type things, so it's not a one-time thing, it's annually. Um, and these are prorated till next May, and then we'll, everybody will be on the same thing. Hopefully, we'll have everybody converted by then and we'll be on the same, uh, part of it, so it'll be all at once. Highway is a price increase to various accounts, I'm making sure I have the same thing. Recorders is onsite destruction of records. Uh, the Board of Health is live well, Trumbull con- uh, contract. Uh, Community Development is engineering for IBI, um, and... Sorry, oh, the chip housing rehab repairs. Um, and then EMA is to fix an over-budget in vehicle maintenance account. The Law Library is to fix an over-budget in various accounts that made payments to Westlaw and Centos. And Neocap is an increase in running bids. And as I mentioned before, number five already corresponded with number three. And if it's okay with you, Commissioner Malloy, we'd like to, so that I can let Christie get back upstairs or downstairs to work, no, she goes upstairs, she's jumping off the roof.
Yeah, we don't want that to happen.
So that Christie can get back downstairs, we'd like to do, um, a little bit of a quarterly budget overview for you guys.
Okay.
Um, we have... I got that narrative, but the holiday, let's see. Um, let's give them. Oh, right, and then I... Uh, we will need one for each commissioner, so... I don't know why I missed those, I'll do it, I'll, we'll do it, we'll do it later. Okay, so there's, so there's one for each commissioner. That's fine, you have, oh, that's, she's got...
She's got a floor, floor total.
Yeah, I already gave him half.
All right, so we just need one back.
Oh, I don't get one about that.
We can have one if you want one. Um, I'll, I'll use this one to go for it. All right, so...
Are you gonna go back? No, I'm just gonna sit here and I'll give her the, I'll give her the, um, the overview later. That's the part that I'm listening.
So for an overview, we've, uh, I've had Christie sort of do some assessments now that we're finished our third quarter. Um, we do, the good news is we do have more revenue than we anticipated and budgeted for in sales tax, casino, and interest on investments. However, we are also anticipating shortfalls in the following departments, Dogtown, CFEA, and nine-one-one, as well as the Sheriff's Office. We're working, uh, with those departments to determine exactly how much of a shortfall in these areas and how the shortfall can be covered. And the options there are the increases in revenue, which are helpful, uh, the contingency account, and other line items within the current budget where we anticipate excess funds. Um, it should be noted that while we have been informed by CFEA and nine-one-one that there will be shortfalls, we're not necessarily seeing those in the financial statements at this time. Uh, one of the reasons, the reasons for that are that CFEA has a pending collective bargaining agreement, which will be retroactive to August once it's approved, and nine-one-one has some unanticipated, unbudgeted expenses, including software. The Sheriff's Office shortfalls are due in part to a budgeting error for two accounts and also budgeting based without taking into account the use of ARPA funds in the last couple of years. So they were budgeting based on what was spent out of the general fund, but not based on what was used, where ARPA funds were utilized to supplement salaries. And because of that, there's a shortfall. Um, we've included information requested on the Sheriff's Office financials at the last update with this, and, um, the Dogtown and Sheriff's Office shortfalls are more obvious in the financial statement. And Christie's here if you have any questions, and of course, always available for questions later on that. The other part of this update, we wanted to let you guys know and just give you, have it on your radar for the borrowing, we've talked about borrowing several times and what we're doing as far as, um, working with the state treasurer through the OMAT program to obtain an S and P rating. As we get closer to the need to borrow, we're also getting closer to March twenty twenty-four when we will need to reissue our current notes. It's been recommended by our financial advisor to advance the money from our own funds to, for capital projects and then borrow to pay ourselves back in March. That will save the county forty-five thousand to fifty thousand dollars by doing it that way. Um, we're, as we're working on balancing the budget for this year, the things that we've mentioned previously about the shortfalls, we're keeping in mind that we want to have that cash on hand to do that. Any questions?
Yeah, just, um, I guess, um, Major Palmer, Major Mason, just with the, the sheriff's shortfall, looking at this, we talked about this back a little ways ago, are there moves you guys are making to help meet us in the middle of this thing, or what are you guys doing there to kind of cut back in anticipation of the shortfall we're gonna have by the end of the year?
Well, the, the cutback part is, is not, at this point, not really gonna be an option. Already fifteen people's friends, what we're looking to do is internally, you know, transfer some money. There, there's not gonna be a whole lot there, it just goes back to, to the, uh, our budget requests is fourteen. So, obviously, gonna be... We've met, we've met with, with Martha... ARPA funding, just... Kind of where we're at. Still have to explore other options, um, to get a little bit better with our, in collecting the revenue. Early, we've had some legal discussion on, on contract and gally, behind the deputies. So, so there is money out there that we are actually, um, that we need to redo. Working on that, um, and trying to...
Okay.
Um, Christie has something to add.
Comment, um, you know, we call them shortfalls, for lack of a better word, but with the, um, the sheet here with the shorter one with just where they're over budget, the sheriff's PRS and then the jail medical one, those were not budgeted properly just based on an error at the, um, time of the upload. Uh, it was put into an Excel file, but that Excel file was not uploaded into Munis, and we had cut off the deadline on that, and Adrian and Debbie went with just what was in the Munis system at that time, and we did address that in March, that it would be addressed later in the year. Um, so it wasn't anything where they're spending more than what they had expected to, it's just that what was entered into Munis was not the proper amount.
That was not a wrong, which one?
Uh, Sheriff PRS, the top one.
Yeah.
Um, the other ones on here listed are the jail, and those, we call it a shortfall, but it isn't, they're not spending any more money than they had spent in, like, say, twenty-one and previously. Um, I did do the five-year, uh, analysis as asked before. It's just that the budget was based on twenty twenty-two where three million dollars of the sheriff, the jail payroll was taken out of general fund and paid out of Fund O seventy-seven, the ARPA money, the anticipated revenue replacement money, I'm sorry. And I do believe that's what kind of was being thought at the beginning of this year when the budget was set, that ARPA money, the revenue replacement money, would also be used again to supplement the sheriff. So it's not that they're spending significantly more than they had in prior years, it's just that their funding source for twenty twenty-two was a different funding source, so it was a general fund, and then this year's budget was based on the prior year's budget, not based on the year's previous to twenty twenty-two.
It seems like the jail and the jail medical are the kind of glaring things that are jumping out, that that's where a lot of your things are that are covered in the background.
And this is just, I mean, I narrowed it down to just these because we talked about these before, and we had talked about these in March when we were setting the original budget and said we would talk about those later when we decided on the revenue replacement and that, uh, stuff. I mean, there are other accounts in the junk fund where they're, they're over budget, but these were the, this was the area where we had talked about. And then there's this one, which is just all of the, um, sheriff's expenses. And you can see, there's not other accounts where they're over budget. It's just these errors where there was the, uh, error in uploading the twenty twenty-three budget into Munis for the sheriff's PRS and the jail medical. And then the issue that we have with the fact that jail payroll, three million, was paid out of Fund O seventy-seven last year, and the twenty twenty-three budget was based on that fact, not using the prior years.
It was utilizing a, a, a lower number than it should have because they weren't taking into account when they did that, when, however it happened, and we've kind of gone round and round about it, but for whatever reason, th- those numbers were inaccurate as far as what salaries really were. So instead of saying, there was, what was it, almost three million dollars?
Three million dollars.
Was paid out by ARPA, um, and that wasn't included, you know, you look at your history of expenses when you're making a budget, right? So that wasn't included in that total.
Right.
So it was a budget, a lot of this is a budgeting error, and I, um, obviously, it was pre-me, and we're, Christie and I are absolutely working to address that. The other part, and, and I'm not so sure about the figures, 'cause I haven't seen that, is really that those deputies, that, having got those contracts for the deputies, that needs to get ironed out. Somehow, um, you guys need to sit with the prosecutors, with JFS, with the commissioners, and figure that out, because once we can get that figured out, that will help. I don't know if it'll help as much as, uh, the figures you guys show, but it will help. And every little bit helps when we're trying to get this, close that gap.
Where are we was getting them paid from, JFS, and you guys, as far as billing for the deputies we have downstairs right now and the deputies over the courts, are we making any headway to billing for that? We need to do that, I mean, that's real numbers, we can't just ignore that we have deputies at the front door that we're not paying for, or that the courts have deputies that they're not paying for.
Correct.
That's gotta be taken into account somewhere if we're gonna have real budgeting on this stuff.
Right.
Well, and a time issue, I would think, because, um, you're using grant, or like, state money that's for fiscal years, and we can't be going retroactive if we go, go into next year because he needs to pay it out of this year's state budget.
So it really, you know, well, everybody that's involved really needs to just sit down and get it ironed out. I mean, I can, as auditor, I only have so much power, I, but I, you know, we're trying to help you guys.
And we, we recognize all that, and, and on top of it for since, prior to the last, since the first came along, we immediately addressed it, and obviously, because we need legal opinions and things and way to work. Use the word contract. We can invoice this one out.
We, someone brought up to me, and I'm, I'm new to this, but we don't have a reserve unit anymore? We don't have guys donating time every month to keep your choices up?
It's, it's very rare, the, the law enforcement employment environment is down, you can pretty much go in.
So that wouldn't help when having a reserve unit to do some hours for free or donating time to fill some of these spots instead of overtime?
If, it would help, uh, the problem is you're just not gonna be able to fill our spot. Environment out there right now, everyone's...
Then to remember, CFP last week specifically stated that they're not allowed to use reserve. They have to, so that's gonna, that's a big difference, same with, when you're using state and federal funding, they dictate how you, I'm sorry, Alex, even Johnson Bush, I mean, Resources Department, but it is very important to note that they are no longer allowed to use reserve, so they have to actually hire, enter into an agreement and hire a sheriff full-time, as what CFP and JFS, I don't wanna speak for you guys, but I know CFP just talked about this last week.
John Gargano, JFS, that's correct, because of, uh, the contract and the unions and things like that. We cannot go to the reservists, we need to have the regular full-time employees, uh, in the building. And as, as to the budgeting and stuff like that, our payment is a little different because it doesn't come from the general fund as, as the others. So we have to, uh, do it a little differently, and that's what we're working on, actually. We talked to the Auditor's Office yesterday about that. Uh, it's a matter of going through the Commissioner's office and then potentially having to reimburse the Commissioners, uh, for those services. And that's our issue.
To, to clarify and make sure that I understand it right, it's actually the Commissioners that have to do, have to get into the agreement or the, uh, to provide those, uh, services, security services.
But I went back and researched, and back, I think, is two thousand and ten, can't remember if it was August, July, there was a, uh, journal entry at that time that said that the Commissioners would provide those security services to the agency. So that, we're not as worried about, we don't have to jump that hurdle, so to speak. Uh, the Commissioner's Office has already made that indication. The other part is, is getting the Commissioner's Office, uh, paid or reimbursed for those services so that, uh, your office could pay them.
And, and we absolutely need to pay you too. I mean, we have your guys down there working for us, and we've never paid ourselves back or never paid you for those services, we just kinda make you guys eat it, and it's that, and we, you know, we can't have that either, you know, we have to lead by example.
I, I would just take just maybe a meeting with, uh, the prosecutor's office with, between yourself and somebody, just to kind of maybe sort of jumpstart it a little bit and try to get moving with it. Because we are, you know, it's October eleventh, it's, it, the end of the year is fast approaching, as Christie reminds me daily.
Thank you.
Commissioner and stuff, Major Dan Mason, Trumbull County Sheriff's Office, we do utilize the reserves. Uh, one of the only county buildings that does not have a security post in its office, we use the reserves in our front lobby, and even that's intermittent, I think we have about three or four active reserves, and I think we get them two days a week.
Yeah, we're safe.
And then our, uh, reason for bringing this up in the past, and again today, is not to say that there is anything wrong done at the Sheriff's Office or that they've spent any more money than they have in the past, it's just to bring up the issues that we had talked about in the March budget, which was the errors that we knew that were uploading, you know, to, uh, Munis, which we said we would address later, and then also the fact that we had used revenue replacement of the ARPA money in the prior year and had, at one point, the assumption that we would probably use that again this year. So if we're not going, uh, my understanding is we're not going to use the revenue replacement, that we need to just increase, we have the areas where we've received extra money and stuff, we need to move the budget around a little bit from those accounts to the sheriff so that we don't show the over-budgets in this. I mean, that's, I mean, that's kind of, uh, that was our original, you know, point in the beginning, you know, hey, we have these issues, are we gonna use revenue replacement? If you're not, we need to fix that within the general fund.
And, and we, we're working, and we'll work further with the Sheriff's Department, uh, Sheriff's Office, sorry, and, and the other departments to figure out how we can, first of all, how much we're going to have to make up, and second, how we can, how we can do that. And especially particularly with the Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office, those contracts play a part in that, because if we can't, we have to get those resolved in order to really know what we need to make up. And so, and, and we'll work on, you know, with the Sheriff's Department even, to try to figure out how much that actually is. And, and I'm not, not trying to be rude about that, I just wanna make sure that we have an accurate number. And so, uh, we'll work with them on that, uh, Christie and I'll be glad to, but you guys have to work on the legal end of it, we can work on the money part.
Well, like they say, there's a new sheriff in town, her name is Martha Yoder.
Not really.
A new budgetary sheriff. So things are different the way it was in the past, we're gonna get it right?
Absolutely, we're trying really hard to do that, and that's one of the reasons we're, you know, I've asked Christie to even do these quarterly ones, is to see where we need to fix for next year and improve next year, and we are, and we anticipate doing these from now on, quarterly, uh, giving you guys some, some spreadsheets and some narratives so you understand exactly where you're at. Um, it's, again, not to be disrespectful to any one department or any one office. It's always just to try to make sure that we have the money and we get it taken care of.
And we have, uh, uh, pinpointed the Sheriff's Office, for lack of a better word, because of using the three million in revenue replacement last year and not budgeting it properly this year, assuming that revenue replacement would be used again and it would be paid out of Fund O seventy-seven, and we wouldn't even have this discussion right now. But because we chose not to use the revenue replacement, we do need to fix it within the general fund, which we can do, we just need to know that that's the way that you would wanna move forward.
Okay, very good. Um, I guess, it's removed from table, uh, hiring somebody to deal with the annexation thing, and I don't know if any of the other Commissioners have a candidate yet, I've got one in mind to myself, and we'll see tomorrow what happens with this, if they nominate somebody or if we nominate someone, um, in regards to that, and like Morris said last week, we don't even know if we need an attorney, but we need an attorney to tell us that, 'cause our attorney can't tell us if we need an attorney with this. So we do have, have an attorney, uh, our attorney's represent Holland also, so they're, they're in a conflict. Um, okay, hauling permit, general transportation, Steve will speak for you, it's just a random, regular permit, right?
Yep, steel coil permit.
Okay, then right away for Claret Farms, Dominion East, Ohio, um...
They have a road closure that I added at the end, very end.
Oh, the very end?
Yeah.
Last page, we'll go to...
It's actually, might be an old road closure.
I will.
That should be as Rockaway Sharon Road.
Oh.
I don't know how, I'm not sure what happened to that.
Okay, I'll make that call.
But this, this road is actually open, the farmers replaced, the road's open.
Okay, so do you wanna get with him and make sure we change the road name?
Yeah, we'll...
Yeah, we'll get it.
Okay, so correct that for tomorrow for twenty-one.
And then Commissioner, on our, on our transfer, um, that's all, um, inter-fund transfers, we're not ask, asking for additional money. The, the bulk of that is coming from our SALT fund, at a mild winter.
Yeah.
There, there's a more detail, there's about two hundred and forty thousand out of, out of SALT in the, um, small, in the islands.
Yeah.
So, then finally, I don't know if you saw the newspaper today, but the Council of Governments, there was the, I didn't find it from the State Auditor, and there was a management letter about demolitions, that, that opinion was referred, so the Council of Governments is able to demolish the State Auditor's Office.
Yeah, you know, um, I, I talked to Randy Smith last week, has he decided on the TID? I don't know if we have his letter back yet, we did get his? Okay, perfect, so we have all of our board members accepted, as of now, right?
I don't have an act.
Nick Cargan's? Okay, so we need...
Or yours.
Okay.
I throw that in there.
You gotta throw right under that bus.
You know, that's more telling, I guess. Um, and then I don't know if, uh, Representative Stevens made his appointment yet or not, we talked about some candidates, and he was in town yesterday and wanted to find out from him or Representative Lloydcheck if he made his appointment yet either. And then we can schedule that, schedule that party to get together. Okay, number ten, approve the employment for fifteen candidates based off the Rubric scores for vacant positions and job and family services and child support. And they are Nicole Tyler, Michael LaRaca, Bonnie Polly, Cherie Glover, Carrie Flynn, Ashley Gere, uh, Rachel Wagner, Jeanette Jackson, Ashley Beck, Lily and Atkinson, Lisa Blevins, and then CSA, Lori Ambrose, Jessica Johnson, Heidi Friend, Isabella...
Kiko.
Kiko? And John, you wanna talk about that?
Yes, John Gargano, JFS, um, as I've told you in previous meetings, we had a lot of, uh, positions to fill, and this process actually started in July, uh, in the summertime, to vent through these, and as we were going, there were, uh, unanticipated, uh, workers that were retiring also, so, uh, we had to expand the number at JFS in particular. Um, and they went through the process, uh, we had to wait for the CI and the FBI background check, so this is where we're at right now. This is the first, I'll say, bunch, and probably after the first of the year, there's gonna be another ten or so that we're gonna have to, uh, fill again.
Hey, I know you still have some work from home, they gotta work their year before they're eligible for that, or that?
Yeah, uh, before they're, before they're eligible to work from home, they have to pass probation and work a full year, uh, at the agency, and then we review where they're at and their abilities, and, you know, if we feel that they have the ability to work from home, then, you know, they have that option if they so desire.
But they'll be trained at least for years?
Oh, yeah, they'll be, they'll be in the office for a year. Now, there are some of these, uh, CFEA, those aides, and I think, um, Ms. Blevins, uh, they don't have that option to work from home because their, their positions don't, uh, necessarily lend them, have that ability that they have to be in, in the office.
Right. Okay, number eleven, approved funds requested by the Metro Parks to hire a part-time manager for twelve hours a week, an amount of ten thousand nine thirty-four. Anyone wanna speak on it?
Kurt Sauer, Metro Parks...
Uh, Kurt Sauer, Metro Parks, uh, Commissioner, a board member. Um, as we reviewed last week, we have, uh, our thirty-year employee, uh, on a contract basis for two hundred dollars a month. Mitzi Sabella is retiring at the end of this month, um, and a, uh, county employee must be, uh, retained to utilize the county financial system that, uh, costs our bills and, and we additionally, uh, having, uh, been given for a dollar a year the use of a property on North River Road for our offices, we are, uh, desirous of putting someone in that office on a reasonably regularly scheduled basis to interface with the public as well as doing the, uh, work of the financial officer for the Metro Parks Board and, uh, Secretarial Services. Get someone twelve hours a week, I know that, uh, it's been, that description has been approved by the HR, and, uh, uh, B, allocated the funding to, to hire.
Hey, perfect, thank you.
And I might also add that, uh, I personally take into advisement those couple of comments that Commissioner Loewen made last week regarding, um, the, the proposed levy and, and amounts and consideration, um, and we will discussing that at our meeting, coordinating this month. Um, and also, uh, welcome any, any comments or, or thoughts, uh, direction or advice as to how we all can utilize the, the funding that's available from the county in the best, uh, interest of all departments. Open to suggestions.
Well, we're, it's on the radar now, at least, I think for all of us, that we need to do something, and we need to give some support, whether it be via more of us or working with you on a reasonable levy of sorts, um, you know, people, and utilize the bike trail, you, you've expanded services, we have great bones for our park district as we have right now, and we've done it on bare bones budget. So if we just sprinkle a little bit of love on that department, I think we can, we can make a lot more progress than what we're doing and, uh, and get it to where it needs to be. So it's on the radar.
Appreciate the prompt.
And we look forward to working with your board to make that happen.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, number twelve, authorized notice to proceed letter be issued to Bulkin Sons for the Chumball County Planning Commission Building Roof Replacement Project, and a request that, uh, we do a notice to proceed letter, so that will move things forward, try to get you a new roof.
We have a preconstruction meeting today.
Very good, Nick doesn't want to wear his flippers to work anymore. Number thirteen, enter in support maintenance agreement with Inteltech Corporation to provide maintenance and licensure to operate the Inteltech IMAC jail management system, the agreement for three years, and the cost is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and three annual payments of forty-five thousand. So apparently this, we're just going with the jail from what I hear now, we're not expanding that into nine-one-one anymore, so it's just gonna be a jail Inteltech.
At this point, Major Dan Mason, Chumball County Sheriff's Office, at this point, with the appointment of a new nine-one-one director, basically she is going to be exploring her options. The jail management system is in place and operating, we have a new figure for the maintenance and, having implemented the other, righty management, the over tab, so it only covers maintenance for the jail management. On which direction the nine-one-one director goes and, you know, we potentially could continue with the Inteltech, or if she goes another direction, you know, we'll have to explore our options at that time.
Okay. And I know if it was a package deal maintenance, price was cheaper, we're paying a little bit higher because we don't have the package deal, um, is this something that was budgeted in the budget, or is this something outside of the budget totally, another fee on top of what we already budgeted?
I, I'm not completely sure on that, I'd have to talk to Christie.
You guys know?
Well, the quote we had was eighty-four thousand dollars for the entire package, this is a reduced from that since it's just no management. And when we did the resolution that it'd be eight thousand dollars, um, originally it was gonna be a five-year contract, but since nine-one-one director has been appointed, uh, talked to go with a three-year contract with the agreement of Inteltech, that if she makes a decision, we're, uh, at that point for other parts, or if we just stay jail.
Okay.
Reduced from the original price that we had.
Was the original price in the budget, when we did the budget submitted to us last year?
Budget I know was part of the resolution and. Commerce said it wasn't in the budget.
It was in the budget for eighty-four though. Yeah. Fourteen, authorize the levy administrator Diane.
Say it.[969.48][969.48](laughing).
Diane Siskelwick Jerkovic.
Almost.
Close enough?
Almost.[976.31][976.31](laughing).
To prepare and submit to the Department of Aging, Health Aging Grant. Registration for this funding opportunity is only available to the Chumball County Board of Commissioners established through HB thirty-three, one hundred and thirty-fifth General Assembly. For all Ohio counties addressed social determinants of health and to foster improved quality of life for older Ohioans, they remain in their homes, be connected to communities, preserve their personal assets for a healthy, independent, active lifestyle, and authorize me to sign and execute the grant agreement if awarded. Okay, so this came up, I, I received a phone call last week from Bonnie, and said, hey, there's money available for the state and, or for your county, it's so much is allocated to us already, it's late, not late, but we notified, we were notified late that we gotta get the money and quick. So I was talking to her meanwhile, you, you already were ten steps ahead of it in working with it, so I'll let you talk about what you have, and then I wanna hear from Bonnie, she has some ideas too that.
Diane Siskelwick Jerkovic.[1037.24][1037.24](laughing).
What did I say differently? I'm close.
I'm not a jerk.[1041.24][1041.24](laughing).
Jerkovic.[1043.24][1043.24](laughing).
Well, not Jerkovic, but Jerkovic.
Yeah.[1046.52][1046.52](laughing).
Just go with Diane, it's safe.
Senior levy administrator, um, this grant was just released October first by the state. It's a one-time opportunity, I guess they had some leftover A, R, RP funds, CARPA funds, that, uh, they are now designated only to Chumball County Commissioners, so only boards can apply for this across all eighty-eight counties. They've already set up a estimated budget for Chumball County due to our population size of seniors, our Appalachian status, we are projected to receive seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Which is almost what we receive from the whole senior levy, right?
No, we get two point three million for that.
Okay.
So that's almost as much as we spend on transportation without grants.
Yeah.
So I did do a summary for you, I emailed it to you, and I also printed it for Commissioner Frenchco, or Lisa did, it's in her mailbox, I'll give you a copy of it if you want, the hard copy. But in summary, there's three areas we have to spend the money on, twenty percent in meals, twenty percent in housing assistance, and ten percent in internet access technology type thing. The rest of that, my advice, or my recommendation, is that you let the Advisory Council discuss what the needs are and come back to you within the next two weeks to see how we can spend this, meet the unmet need, or maybe new projects. Um, today's general action is only to sign the document that registers us to be available for the grant, it's not the actual grant application. Uh, the state will come back to us and let us know how much they will award and all of their specifics for that. So this is the beginning of that. Ken Velecky, am I saying the right last name? Okay, we, I have another Ken that I work with. Ken Velecky reached out tomorrow on October second, the day after he didn't, was released, on October third, Denny, or, had reached out to me, so I had done a couple days of research to find out what we needed, and we've been moving along on this.
Okay, so the money's gonna come back to the Commissioners? And then you're gonna work with the Jewish Community Center, or we have to figure it out, or we have to figure?
We have to decide how to contract this funding. I was made aware by Julie Green, Planning Commission, about the ability to work with nonprofits and associations. I also verified with Phil, we don't have to go through the competitive bid process like we do with the RFPs for the senior levy. That's a decision to be made with the Commissioners, how we want to award these funds, and to what program you want to do. This is fully, really, Chumball County Commissioner's decision.
Right.
But the Advisory Council, I would assume you would want them to help you with that decision.
Sure. And you guys provide how many hot meals now?
Well, it was a little bit different, it's not quite the meal, so I think.
And now to you?
Oh, I, I apologize, I'm Bonnie Birdman with the Youngstown Area Jewish Federation and Community Relations and Government Affairs. And for, uh, clarity, the Federation is the umbrella organization that includes a number of agencies, including Jewish Family and Community Services. So, um, this particular money, uh, the reason we're involved is our lobbyists in Columbus , uh, work with a number of us around the state, there are eight Jewish federations around the state of Ohio, work with the, um, Ohio Department of Aging and legislators, and created a pilot program in the last budget where, um, I, I think it was a half a million dollars, was spread around five Jewish Family and Community Service Agencies around the state to do the, this, uh, healthy aging type programming, and it was focused on technology. So it's a little bit different than the meals that we've been providing, although now that the money has been in, is, uh, the forty million dollars was added in the current operating budget to be spread around all eighty-eight counties, and ODA very specifically lobbied and the legislature agreed to make it very easy for counties to access this money by giving it directly to the Commissioners. So the good news is it should be easy to get, and then you all have the authority in consultation with, uh, those who were working on the ground and doing all the important work to make the decisions on where it goes. So the reason why we were notified about it, again, is because we, we did this pilot program very, very successfully, and I'm gonna turn that part over to Ken because he directed the pilot program.
Sure. Uh, Ken Velecky, Executive Director of Jewish Family and Community Services in Youngstown. So we did have a tech pilot program that started last year, we got awarded ninety-two thousand dollars. We had seventy participants, uh, in our program, and we provided each of them, some of them were Chumball County residents, half and half with Mahoning County, so we had about thirty-five in each county, we had a waitlist on top of that. We provided each participant with an Echo Show ten, which is the Alexa with a video screen, we were able to do dropping phone calls with them, these are for sixteen older, uh, we were able to go into the homes and set them up, we were able to al- also get the, uh, Alexa Together subscription program, so if a senior citizen fell at home, they can call out to their Alexa and they can call nine-one-one for them. So there was a lot of safety mechanisms with that, but also social connectiveness with, uh, the seniors and with our staff. Uh, we have two great staff on board that are helping this program, Lynn Azar is our senior outreach coordinator, and then Nicole is also our YIC student, who's a PhD student in anthropology. Uh, both of them are very well versed with technology, and they go up to the homes, they pass out the equipment, they show the older adults how to use the equipment, and then check in with them monthly through the equipment, and also check in with their family members to make sure that they're using it properly. Um, it was very successful, uh, we were hoping to get, get a continuation from the Department of Aging, but this is how they decided to allocate the funding. Uh, in addition to that program, we do offer a lot of older adult programs free at the Jewish Community Center for Chumball and Mahoning County residents. We have a free group for sixteen older, we have a caregiver support group, uh, which is, uh, about twelve to fifteen people come on a monthly basis for people taking care of their older parents. Uh, we also have a Tech Tuesday class, which is every other week for sixteen older, we show them how to use the television, how to use just tablets, we pass out tablets to them for free at no charge because we get grant funding from the mental health boards as well in Chumball and Mahoning. Um, we also, uh, have a lunch bunch, which is, we have, uh, about seventy people showing up to our JCC once a month, we do a free presentation on a relevant topic for older adults, we provide a free lunch, all for no charge. Uh, so on top of this program alone, we have a lot of other senior outreach programs available for Chumball County residents, and we would love to be a part of, uh, this funding if it's appropriate for the technology piece, older adults.
Okay, interesting, very good. Seven hundred thousand bucks is awesome.
Seven hundred and ninety thousand. First time we've ever received grant money through senior levy, other than our levy fund. It's not an easy, and there, there's not a lot of grants out there for government to access that side.
Diane, Julie Green, just to clarify, um, on our end, we are able to, uh, enter into agreements with nonprofits, but what I had, I think, mentioned is we should check with the funder, funding agency to see if subrecipient agreements are allowed, because some funding entities allow it, some do not.
I'm guessing that'll come through once they award the money, all of the specifics of that grant.
Hopefully, yeah, that should be spelled out in there.
The, the only thing I wanna mention, there is a deadline of October thirtieth.
(laughing).
For, uh, for the, uh, application from you guys, so.
I have that ready.
Yes.
I have one more little piece to work on, I have that ready to go. Um, Lisa, Julie brought to my attention wording on this, this, I will send you some additional verbiage if needed, the very last line where it says execute the grant agreement if awarded, she recommended execute related documents, including but not limited to the grant agreement if awarded the fund. So I'll send you that.
Okay.
Good, that's awesome, that's fantastic. I remember we had a meeting back in January, February, when Brandy was still with us, and she was worried about how we're gonna make it to the end of the year, and this is the type of thing that we wouldn't hope for then, but we've moved on from that differently, but you give us a nice jumpstart in the next year too.
And, and Bonnie Birdman, we were really proud to be a part of that, and having, you know, had a, a really important political part in advocating for that funding at the pilot level, and then, of course, we worked closely with ODA to lobby the legislature very heavily to keep that, um, keep the new funding, the, uh, forty million in the current operating budget, which wasn't easy, it was in the House version, the Senate stripped it from the bill, and so there was a really, a, a lot of, uh, fast footwork to get it back into the House version, and it ultimately got in, and, and now Chumball County's gonna be, uh, you know, very strong recipient of some of these funds. We're very excited about the work we do, and very excited that you have the opportunity to spread this around where it's needed.
And one last comment, our levy is up for renewal next year, so I feel that this is perfect timing to possibly introduce new programs, so that when that levy renewal comes through, we can continue those programs with the levy increase that they're planning, it would be part of that planning process.
And you're just planning on a renewal next year, not a?
We have not changed our rate since two thousand and five, we are operating two thousand, two thousand and twenty-three cost with two thousand and five revenue. It's ridiculous, we, we have to ask for an increase.
All right, fifteen. And if you guys, if you can, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
The doctor resolution authorized the Commissioners, uh, from, this is Niles Historical Society. This must've been one of the ones that she had already approved when we put the brakes.
Right. Yeah, I'll just, if it's okay, I can, I'll speak a little bit to this, and then I have an update for you.
Sure.
But there were, uh, five of the ones that, uh, you approved last week that had already been through legal, and you said you wanted to move forward. One of those was Braceau, which we were able to do the resolution last week.
Right.
Three of them are resolutions that are on this week, Niles Historical Society, Harriet Taylor Upton, and Vianna Historical Society, the Copper Penny Building.
Okay.
So those are on this week. We'll have one more of those five that we still need a resolution from legal on for United Way, and we're working with legal on getting that. So of those five, that's where we're at.
Good. Well, that can, that conducts the rest of it.
Do you wanna move into the ARPA, the, the update then?
Sure.
All right, I'll, just pass those down, there's one for each Commissioner.
All right, uh, Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, am I able to get some signatures for you before I sit through this briefing?
(laughing). Sit through that?
Here's my.
I haven't used it since fifth grade.
We leave if needed?
Gary, how's the hearing shaping up?
It's probably just a comment.
Uh, we're, uh, uh.
I'm gonna.
Thank you, like.
Oh, yeah, Thursday night, yeah, hearing.
I'm, I just wanna get through this and answer it. I gave them a whole bunch, they've actually been given all of this.
Uh, we went out to the ballroom, we went out to the ballroom.
I have a.
Last, uh, yesterday after the Saturday Miller night, it's gonna be a much better venue.
What's the date of that?
It's, uh, it's tomorrow night.
Trust me, I'm out of here, so I've got, like, people waiting.
Doing a great job.
Trying.
Wonderful to have good staff, too.
I do, I have really great people.
They're very fortunate, yeah. Staff of one here, and I'm not easy to. Staff of one here, and I'm not easy to put in.
I am definitely.
Yeah, I'm wondering what that is.
I always think like the fiscals who had no sense before, right, because they would, I'm only encompassing-
Yeah, I would love to see that bill.
The current budget to the end of the year.
Um.
The fiscals were for the full amount of funds, and that wasn't, me, it didn't make sense.
Right.
And thanks to you, I believe, to sign that, it now falls within-
Eight million.
Christie and for my reading, I'm sure that that stuff is the right.
Yeah. So, I agree. I used to say, I don't know, this is, this is your end. It doesn't make sense.
It's, I hope.
It needs assistance.
So, I heard you got zero.
It's not good. We'll fix it in progress. And it all, I mean, they aren't going to be there.
Yeah, they just have to be, uh.
Right, but we shouldn't be fixing those. Christie is. I like digging into that part.
Debbie is leaving.
It'll be fine. She's taking lots of vacation time now, or is she like?
Um, she took a bunch.
And tomorrow you need to-
She's with us now till the mid of November.
Gary, if you can call the other commissioners and make sure they're both going to be there tomorrow.
This is a big time here.
Because there's another one tomorrow that's being-
Oh, really?
Yeah, she's been doing this.
(laughing) Oh, I, I've announced this one six weeks ago.
I understand that.
Okay, and we have to have a forum here. We're going to lose a million bucks if we don't have two commissioners there.
Right. That's what I mean. We need to, tomorrow, six today.
I just told me, I was like-
Hopefully, he's good tomorrow.
All right.
But we need to make sure because of that.
We were just talking about it, Gary.
Always been wonderful working with the staff, whatever you needed.
Pardon me? Yeah, and there's, uh.
David Joyce had something tomorrow.
Do we have an extra time in the morning?
Yeah, that's coming in. Christie and Marla.
Yankee Lake over that.
I wouldn't want to deal with that and the budget right now.
It's fine.
No, no.
Yeah.
We're just letting people get out of here. They don't want us to worry.
No, she's not returning my emails. She's not returning my calls. I just called yesterday.
Just a minute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for noting that.
Okay, guys, anybody have anything else they want to discuss before our file? Yes, Mike Salomon.
I came in late because I said one thing I want to say real fast.
Okay.
Um, the meeting for October eighteenth is on.
Okay, guys, listen up for this. Listen up.
Okay, I got the responses back. All, um, people I've invited are coming to it. So, right now, there's only going to be one commissioner, and I'm assuming that's going to be.
What time is that?
The meeting is at, uh, one-thirty. It's a Zoom meeting, but I can only have one commissioner at it.
Okay.
Um, I'm assuming it will be tomorrow, but if it's you, that's fine. But I can only, on the Zoom meeting, there's going to only be one commissioner.
Okay. This is at one-thirty?
Yeah, October eighteenth.
Oh, what just?
However, the meeting will be recorded. Whichever commissioners are not at the meeting, they can watch it afterwards, course subtly. So, I've gotten the, I got the information from the prosecutor.
Okay, so we need to decide tomorrow at the public meeting which of three commissioners is going to be active on that meeting.
And the meeting will be here, so they could either be in your offices there, or they could be out here with me.
Okay.
That's up to you.
Okay.
And then my other recommendation will be whoever is not on the call at that point, if they want to send me questions, I've already got an agenda, but I can add to the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's going to be you. Mira's going to be on that?
Mira's not going to, as of right now, Mira's not going to be on it, however, Jim Kinnick, who is the Executive Director, will be on it. Um, Dean Harris, and then possibly two people from ODAD.
Yeah.
So, now, just FYI, tomorrow, I will not be able to either attend or listen to the meeting. I've got another appointment. So, if you decide to do anything, please have somebody send me an email.
Okay.
And then I'll just follow up with that. Uh, the other thing was, we talked about doing a public meeting after this, so if you want us up a public meeting after this, that'd be, again, up to three of you, however, I'm going to be gone the week of the twenty-third, so we wouldn't be able to do it that week.
So, the following week, you'd be out?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do want to do the public meeting. That's where we have the advisory-
Right.
People, we want to hear from them. We want to get their input. We need to hear what they have to say first, which will be relayed to us, I guess.
Yeah.
Uh, after we, after that meeting.
Yeah, so that's fine, but I just wanted to let you know I will not be here the week twenty-third, twenty-seventh, unless you set something up, and I'm not here.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yep, that's good to know, and Lisa, just making note of that, that needs to be brought up tomorrow so we can just write that out as a reminder, and then they'll remind me tomorrow to make sure we pick who the representative is going to be.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything else? You have something to be around me at?
Thank you. My name's Rita Tate. This is Maury Preston. We're from Youngstown Automotive LLC and on Youngstown Harbor Road. We applied for the ARPA funds for the workforce development, and I'm sure you've seen the application, and renovation. Thank you for your email and this order. Um, my question was, because it wasn't enough to expound on exactly what it is. CCTC and MCTC, they have, their auto mechanics have became a very small program. But we're looking to do is open the school. We have the ability and the room and the space to even expand for not only automotive schools. He's a prior teacher from Shoffin, and because they don't have the program no more to teach, he purchased an old elec, electric company. And so, with the Ever Change the World, the EV vehicles, so when we submitted our application for the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the ARPA funds, it wasn't enough to expound exactly what we wanted to do. And so, not only do we have the classroom, the teacher ability, the hands-on training in the mechanic shop, also just for renovations, to get smart boards, to be able to have computers, and have it a PIN-up program for the ages of eighteen to twenty-five, where people that have infrastructure law can't get fast loans, can't get federal brands. However, our school would open that to stop the recidivism, be able to come to the class, do PIN-ups, and become a certified mechanic, and so that they can be gainfully employed, and therefore, that's what the application was for.
Okay. Yeah, that wasn't clear.
Right.
I think when we discussed it, like, are you guys nonprofit or not?
No, he's for profit.
For profit, you can see. Okay.
And that, we'll get a little bit into the list, but I divided the list. Where, even though that was a no last week, the commissioners agreed to put it on the no list, um, they also said that they will revisit the no's at some point.
All of them, yes.
Yeah. So, even though it's separate from what, so you know what you said before.
Right.
It's on a separate spreadsheet now. It's still there. It's not like, not because they said no, do I like wipe it from the drive or anything?
Is there?
All of that is still there. If you have-
Is the program up and running now, and so how many students do you have now, or how many are accredited?
He, um, here's, here's the syllabus if you decide that you wanted to see it. Um, we're just opening doors so that we can start the school and make everything accordingly. And it's right there in Youngstown, um, well, Hubbard, on Youngstown Hubbard Road. And I just believe because we can open it up to people who maybe have a misdemeanor or, or a felony five or felony four that can't go and get a job per se or, or education funding because we're, we can still open the doors to make them gainfully employed and certify them, that they can work for Nissan or Chevy, and then open the doors for the EV vehicles because we're a previous electric company where we can, um, supply the electricity for up to twenty thousand, so fifty thousand homes.
Um, would you, if they want to submit more information, would you be open to letting me put that back, uh, with their application on the drive? So, you have my email. If you want to email me scans of PDFs of all the, of the further information, I'll be glad to put it on the drive for, if they do decide to reconsider, it'll be there for them.
I guess the other question is that I have just read off the thing. So, you, you are located in Chumel County?
Yes, sir. Yes, on Hubbard Road.
Um, but I see it's, does it use in, so Youngstown?
That's, that's the syllabus he goes according to from when he taught at Shoffin.
Okay.
Career center.
So, this is just where he's going to modify this to do something in Chumel County?
Yes.
Okay. But it's not, is this accredited by anybody yet, or it's not because it hasn't, you don't have history yet?
Not as of yet.
Okay. Those are questions. It'll be-
Sure.
It's a startup, basically.
Right.
It's funding a startup that doesn't have the track record, which is probably why some of the questions came up or whatever, that it wasn't something that COVID hurt, you know, in the attorney's opinion, too, I would think, that-
Right, it might be.
COVID hurt this because of it not being there, because it wasn't even in existence in the first place beforehand.
No, actually, it did. That's how his, his position got abolished. They, they stopped the program totally at Shoffin, and then he went out on his own involvability and began to, um, one of our students is prior from Shoffin. A young man that's there now trying to get a training and certified. So, we do have accredited teachers that would teach the class, and then he certified to cert, to provide them.
Okay. Yeah, so any of the stuff like this, put it tomorrow, so to put with the original application so we can understand it a little better.
You have my email, just email it to me, and I'll throw it on the, on the drive, and I'll update you when the, all the commissioners, when it's there.
Okay.
So, I don't need to come tomorrow, right?
No. No, because we're not even at that point. We still got to go through, the maybes next, and then we'll go back to the no's with whatever we have, um, with money that's left, but we're talking a couple of months down the road for that, I would think, before we get to that. But we have, right now, we've got forty-five yeses that we have to put through, and that's, as you can see, three or four a week. It's going to take us quite a second just to get those.
And they have to be, they, those, the remaining ones that are not doing resolutions on have to go through legal yet.
Yes.
So, um, we're, those legal opinions take a little bit, too. Um, do you want me to go ahead now?
Yep. Anybody else have anything? Okay.
Okay. So, um, at the last commissioners' meeting, I was given some tasks to complete, and I want to just give you the results so, as they have them right now. I was asked to reach out to Mayor McIntosh from Farming, West Farmington regarding requests. I did so. Two requests were received and added to the maybe category, and now it's the maybe spreadsheet. And the application is added to the ARPA pending application folder on the commissioners' drive under West Farmington Village. I was asked to reach out to Veterans Outreach regarding requests, and in corresponding with Carrie Eli, from that organization, it was determined that they did actually submit an application back in May, but somehow it was never added to the drive. Um, I found it in the County Project's email. I have, I have it now, and I've added it to the ARPA pending applications folder under Veterans Outreach and added it to the maybe category. Um, I was asked to reach out to MCA to see if, if they had requests, um, and they had one request that I received, and it's been added to the maybe category, and it's on the commissioners' ARP drive, ARPA pending application for the-
So, MCA did submit.
Yeah, MCA did submit, and it's already on the drive. I reached out to Green with no reply. I reached out to Lordstown. I did not get a reply from Lordstown Village, but someone from the Lordstown Senior Center actually came in to the office and they asked about it, and then they were emailed a nonprofit application. Have not heard back from them with that. I asked Kinsman for priorities, and I, an email from them was forwarded to you guys yesterday.
And that was the same priorities as we put it on already?
Right, right, correct. And I was asked, uh, we asked, I was asked to contact Gus Davis for priorities, and I rece, and we found an email with those priorities with, we had-
With the same as I described in the meeting.
Yeah, we spoke to Mr. Cosby together because he called, happened to call you when I was around, and so, um, that email was also forwarded to you. Um, when I found that the Veterans Outreach request had been missed on the County Project's email, um, I went ahead and got access to that email address through IT in order to determine if there were any more requests that were missed, and I did find two. Uh, first of all, a request from Fowler General Store dated five eighteen twenty-three for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a wheelchair ramp. Uh, it says ramps, ramps. I missed that, sorry. And walking close is what happens when you stay until eight-thirty to write stuff. This request was added to the maybe category, and then the application is in the pending ARPA, ARPA applications in a folder named Fowler General Store. Uh, there was a request from Community Legal Aid that was dated nine fifteen twenty-three for four hundred thousand dollars for providing legal assistance to low-income seniors. The request was added to the maybe category, and the application is in the pending ARPA applications in a folder named Community, uh, Legal Aid. In addition to this, Gus Davis, after we talked, and I don't really think that we told him to submit, and we actually told him to look at other funding for this, but apparently he took that, I can just submit. So, I went ahead. He submitted an applic, an additional request, and it's for surveying cemetery. It's for fifty-seven hundred. I went ahead and added it to the folder and put it under the maybe categories. You guys can do with it as you wish, but I went ahead and just did.
He did ask you about that, and-
Yeah, we, I felt like when we ended that conversation, that we had said, go look elsewhere, but apparently he took it a different way. I, maybe I'm-
Okay.
Anyway, um, we now have four separate spreadsheets to encompass, compass all four statuses of the request. We have an allocated and promised spreadsheet, and I put Braceville is now on there because we've completed the resolution for them, so they are on the allocated and promised. Um, and then as we approve the resolutions, so the three resolutions that you approve tomorrow will be moved from the yes sheet to that, so everything is kept in the same, in the right place. We have a yes spreadsheet. These are the requests that last week on Tuesday, and then some were actually kind of changed on Wednesday, but we'll say Tuesday. They are at various stages of legal approval, um, some that have been approved by legal. We're working on resolutions, as we already talked about. We have three this week, one that hopefully we'll have next week if we get it back from legal. We have the maybe sheet, and these are requests that you, I, also, that the board said maybe to, and then I also added new requests on there so that you would have a chance to consider those when we consider the maybes. Um, any additional requests, so if I get anything from Lordstown Village or Green, I will add to the maybe pile, and I will notify the commissioners, as I've been doing since last week. Um, there's a no sheet. These are the no's from last week's meeting, and you guys have expressed the idea to revisit those, so we're hanging over, hanging on to those that's put away, though, for later, all right? Um, in moving, uh, the Braceville request to the allocated promised sheet, that changed the available money total to ten million, one hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and eighty-six cents. The total of the request on the yes sheet is five million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. If every request on the yes sheet is approved by legal and then approved by resolution by the commissioners, the total remaining to spend of the ARPA, of our funds is four million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-three.
Okay, and we'll need one more spreadsheet down the road of funds that we allocated that they did not use as they returned.
Well, and if that, and I can do it that way, or as we have returned funds, I can change this spreadsheet, the allocated promise, and update it as I had been updating, and, and I update both ways.
I just wanted to have a tracking way to know, like, the one thing that worries me is Scott Street. We talked about that, nine hundred thousand dollars. They may not use all of it.
Correct.
And I read in the paper the other day, they're giving their city manager a thirty thousand dollar raise, and her project, or her contract says she's got to finish with this, this, this. Scott Street was one of them, and I want to make sure that our ARPA money, is when we had said it may not be that much, I didn't want to give Newton Falls just to check it for nine hundred thousand.
Right, it's not, it's not going to Newton Falls. It's going to Saniteria.
That's why I want to make sure. I want to make sure that her increase in her fees to oversee the project doesn't get written in any of that.
None, none of, none of, right, right. And that's through, that's through Saniteria, but every, that money goes through Saniteria. It doesn't go directly to Newton.
Okay.
All right? Um, but as we get updates on costs of things, and it's one of the things I wanted to actually have done by now was to go through and see what we've actually spent and add some columns to the spreadsheet, so it won't be an additional one to, to show that. Unfortunately, as you guys keep adding requests and asking, asking me to reach out, I haven't had as much time as I would like to do.
Oh, you've done an amazing job so far, but amazing. I could just see from between this and the insurance department budget between, I don't know when you sleep with all the stuff you're doing with the numbers. You've done an amazing job.
I, I sleep, but I dream-